All right, I'm gonna call the meeting of the Essex Junction City Council to order. Wednesday, August 27th. First item on the agenda is any additions or changes?
I suggest we move up six, five C to five A. As Carl is here with us, so then he can leave if you would like.
Sounds like a good plan.
Yep.
Any other changes?
additions?
Marcus, do you have anything?
Okay, then I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Marcus.
Marcus can't hear us.
Can't hear you right now.
There you go. How about now?
Can you hear us now?
Perfect, thank you.
Well, what's your vote on the agenda?
Doesn't know what it is.
Did you, did you hear us at all? Nothing? Okay. Let's, let's rinse and repeat here, guys. All right.
Got it.
We'll entertain a motion to prove the amended agenda. We were amending the agenda to put Carl ahead of everybody sitting here in the room.
Move C to A. So I'll make, uh, move the motion.
I'll second the motion again.
All in favor?
Aye.
Sure.
Thanks for being amenable, Marcus.
It's close enough.
Thought I'd be different this time.
All right, next is public to be heard. There's nobody in the room? Online? Anybody? All right. We're moving on. So a discussion and consideration of health officer and deputy health officer appointments.
All right, Carl, you're welcome to join us if you'd like at the, at the table. No pressure. So the memo in front of you is right now your health officer is Assistant Fire Chief John Raul. He is going to be stepping down at the end of September. Carl, also Essex Junction Fire Department member, is interested in the position and we have spoken with him and my recommendation is that you folks recommend Carl as the city's health officer, which is a city council recommendation to the Vermont Commissioner of the Department of Health. The other thing that this memo is asking for here is a reappointment of the deputy health officer who is Sharon Kelly in the town. So our tradition and we're continuing on with this is that the deputy health officer in the town acts as the, sorry, the health officer in the town acts as the deputy for the city and vice versa. There are two different timelines in here. The deputy health officer appointment for Sharon Kelly has to be made for September 1st. Whereas the appointment for Carl for health officer for the city is for October 1st.
A quick question on the form indicates, oh, never mind. I think I've answered my own question.
We do have a revised form for Sharon that clarifies that it's a September 1 start date.
Okay.
I think there's an October 8th, August 1 start date on the form, so we've got that corrected.
Yeah, I think the only other, no, I guess I didn't answer my own question. There's on Carl's form, it says it's reappointment, but wouldn't it be a new appointment?
Yes, it should be a new appointment, so we can adjust that.
Assume your, your game. Super excited. All right, so let's see, do we have a, we have any questions from city councillors?
I don't. It's just, uh, take a minute to thank Carl.
Do you have any questions for us, Carl?
I know.
We appreciate it.
It's nice. There's a little bit of time between when John, you guys, I know you have a lot of spare time, as do I. So there's nice, there's a little overlap there, so. Yeah, good.
Nice.
Good.
Somebody want to read the motion?
I move, yeah, I move that the city council make the recommendation to the Department of Health to appoint Carl Wermer and to the position of health officer for the city starting October 1st, 2025, and reappoint Sharon Kelly to the position of deputy health officer for the city starting September 1, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Carl.
Have a good night. All right, next we got Public Works Department Head brief to the city council, Ricky Jones. Take it away. You do have to come to the mic, though.
So I did some bullets for you folks.
All right.
I wanted to either, you guys probably, these are kind of quick.
Yep.
There might be some questions from some of these people. Looking over you, Marcus, too. Or if not, that we could just jump onto the next one that we're looking, I'm looking forward to hearing.
Take it away.
So, uh, look back in the past six months. The winter went well. You know, we had a decent, kind of a normal winter that we've seen in the past. We hired two full-time employees, so we are fully staffed, which we haven't said in a long, long time.
Nice.
Going with the Lincoln Hall renovations, that's just about wrapped up now. We get some tweaks, maybe a couple of little hiccups probably here and there, but not a lot. Good. And before we hired the full-time staff, we were looking at contracting out what would cost the city to contract out a snowplow and sidewalks and also the, like the road painting. And after we got some numbers, it took a while. And it just wasn't, I not in the cards for that. And I probably should have put Crescent Connector in there too, the old croissant connector. That, that is wrapping up good. So there's just a little bit left. Then the look ahead, of course, Iroquois water line, that's, I don't want to jinx it, but that is going very good. Then the new shop, question mark? Mr. Hamlin's here. Yeah, to be continued after that. And looking forward to wrapping up Lincoln Hall. Be done with that. That's good. That's, that came out great. I'm sure you, I'm sure you folks have probably seen it or gone through it. No, that came out really well. Uh, we're helping out with the wastewater treatment facility. They've got a new camera that we put on our Super Sucker 7000. Put it on there, we can jet up and on the way back, you take, it takes a video of it. It's not live, it's downloaded to a phone, then we have to goes to a cloud, then we get it. But trying to help out, they have a lot of problems with that, I and I, you know, infiltration inflow. It's gone down a little bit by the sounds of it because of being so dry. So once the, we're playing with the camera now. Finding a couple of little hiccups where that, that we could try to get that going. And, um, once the I and I comes back up, they'll see the numbers to plant. We're going to try to get out there and just TV some lines, see if we can find out where some of this is coming from. We hope that helps. And we're stepping back into some of the building maintenance, you know, Lincoln Hall and and the library. We helping them again after things got switched around. So we're back on that. And the, keep working on the traffic lights, especially around the five pointers area. Got a price on getting some new cameras there to help out with some of the clarity on it and update them there. I think they're back in 2009. I think they were originally. And this project, the Crescent Connector, when they did this, they didn't realize they were going to be that old, you know, by the time the Crescent Connector was installed.
We started it 30 years ago.
Yeah, so it's, you have, boy, we should, we should upgrade those. And it's, um, I've talked to one person, uh, one of our contractors, and they've got some new ones now, of course, the latest and greatest
Yeah.
stuff. And it gives you like, uh, traffic counts, uh, people count, stuff like that. So just started looking into that. So I put a bug in Regina's ear the other day about the budget, so we can start working on that fairly soon, but that's kind of the high spots right there. You know? Some of the recent stuff, I went over, held the ladder at the library for the bee lady, Michelle. Get the bees out of there.
Okay.
Yep.
Where are the bees?
They were tucked up above the window on the flower shop side, way up in there. So I had, I had to hold the ladder, she's not great with ladders.
Oh.
20 footer. So I held it and she was in her bee suit and she's going to spray them. I said, I'm down here. I'm like, am I going to be okay? She'll be calling. I'm like, okay. So I didn't, no, she was right. I was okay. I just sat there. I'm like, it's going to be bad.
Thanks for doing that.
Yeah.
Other duties aside.
Yes.
You guys got questions, Ricky?
Yeah, I don't know. It seems like you're in a much better spot this year than last, right? You sat here last year and we talked about struggles of finding people. So you've, you've found the people.
Yes.
I tell you, and I, I always say it to people is, we're very fortunate. You, you talked about the, the dollars to paint the roads and clear the sidewalks. We're always pretty fortunate. Our paint crew, these get these dedicated guys that work overnight to do a lot of the busier intersections. Uh, and so it was back today, it was the first day of school, all the crosswalks are painted, all the stop bars. It doesn't mean people are going to stop at the stop bars, but the stop bars are painted, the intersections are done, the crosswalks are there.
Or missing a couple Rs.
Yeah, well, I wasn't going to mention the R.
Well, I'll bring it up. Probably somebody saw them. We do have the stencil.
You do have the stencil this year.
We had to make a stencil. We could not find it. So after they painted at the Crescent Connector and over on Main Street for the pavement, we went over and measured and had one of the guys.
Yeah.
They kind of have stencils. So it's not the greatest week to be doing the Rs.
You know, and then I, I just want to take a minute and acknowledge, because I talk to the public a lot and every interaction I hear from them is, you know, we submit something to receive, click, fix, or we call you guys, the public works folks, and it's an immediate response. And so I know even, even now that you're fully staffed, I imagine it's a little bit easier, but even through your, your time where you weren't, it's been a great response. So, you know, everybody I talk to always talks about the sidewalks are clear, the roads are clear, everything's looking great. And so I just want to give you a little props for that.
I'll appreciate it. Try like that over there.
And have you found the, like, the library roof is just getting, is going to be happening soon?
It's going to be happening. We don't know when.
Yeah, and so that's part of the
Employee hiccup on their part.
Okay.
And so that's, they're working on that.
And so the, the split responsibilities are helping out with buildings that's, that's going, okay?
Yep.
Okay. All right, just, just a curiosity.
Yeah, that's going fine.
Yeah, I think we're, we're still in a state of evolution of figuring out what level of need we need on that front, right? Because we just finished a huge project to Lincoln. You know, and I think, I can't remember if it was last budget cycle or when we talked about this, but there's a world of building work that would be great to get to, like an inventory of everything and trying to figure out all the maintenance needs in all of our facilities. And so we could prioritize what those needs are, much like we do in the capital plan, but for the buildings. So just a lot of different pieces that I think we've still got to figure out exactly how we'll kind of pick those up and, and do them, but in terms of assistance with maintenance and getting folks in, it's awesome that Ricky's team can help step back in to do that type of work at Public Works and the library. Very appreciative.
Marcus, do you have questions for Ricky?
Oh, my weight. No, actually, I have, I have a, I do have a question. Just out of curiosity.
First, Marcus? I want to guess. I want to guess. I'm going to take a shot at this. The corner of Hiawatha and West Street, the cones.
No. No.
Campy and Waters supposed to come in there and do some work, so that's why we haven't repaired anything. They're coming in and do some work on their, uh, their connection to our main there. They're going to do that. So I'm sorry, I just wanted to, I just want to see if I can jump ahead of it. See if I, I tried.
No, no, and believe me, I, I thought about it, but I also knew, so it's fine. Um, no, actually, I'm, I was curious. As I was driving through the city today, it just brought up a question for me in understanding the lights, not the Crescent Connector lights. I know based on the conversations we've had around those Crescent Connector lights and the work that's going to continue to be done until it's finished. I'm wondering about the other lights in the city, whether it's the one at West Street Extension and Pearl Street or the one on Susie Wilson. Do they all work in relatively the same manager, same manner in, because I know with the Crescent Connector lights are being put up, one of the things that I understood is it is kind of taking an evaluation of the traffic at the moment in order to potentially change the interval to help the flow. Does that happen on these, at these other intersections as well?
On West Street, we have not studied that one. We haven't had any problems with that. Uh, and Susie Wilson is not ours. That's a state, state-owned signal.
Okay. It, it only came up for me today because I was sitting at what felt like at that light at West Street. There was nothing on Pearl at the time. And there was a ton of us sitting on West Street Extension for, for a period of time. And again, it doesn't come up on a regular basis. So it's not one of those problems that, you know, let's get on top of this. Let's, no, no, I, I would just, I was just curious. So.
Pretty apparent, and we get a lot of calls, and we see it ourselves. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Cool. Thanks.
I was just going to tell them I'll start calling them every day because that light at West Street Extension in Pearl doesn't. When I leave at four o'clock in the morning, it usually I roll up and it turns. It hasn't done that for a couple of weeks now.
Oh, yeah.
So there's
Did you put it in?
Did you put a C clip?
All right. Listen, I'm not going to C click fix at four o'clock in the morning when I'm driving. I'm going to go left on red.
He says that at the word of the police station, but anyway.
It continues it.
Yeah, I will. I only remembered it because Marcus said something.
Do you know where we're located over there at Lev Jackson?
Uh, I know, I had, I know how to use the city C click fix, so I'll go that route.
Okay, very good.
Ryan, do you have any questions?
I do, I do. Um, thanks Ricky for coming in. Uh, you, you, you've seen, speaking of C click fix, you've seen that, um, that, that, um, that, that, that entry from what happened on Grove Street this week?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, it just, can you give me a little background and for, for the people who are watching online? Some work seemed to be done on the, on the sewer system and it pushed into people's houses?
Yes. Yeah, that was our new camera that we're trying out.
Okay.
We put, uh, skids on it. The guys, when they're out there, they put skids to get up a little higher, so it makes it heavier. So they had to bump the pressure up. Trying to get up that line to get that picture.
Okay.
Yes. Now we, uh, the operator talked to one or two, maybe three people that came out. And I, I went over and met with, uh, one of them also the next day.
Okay. And is this, is this, um, is this something that can be prevented or just you're learning how to knock, I mean, because nobody wants
No, no. Yes. No, definitely understood. Yeah, with the new Super Sucker 7000, we did get some different nozzles.
Good.
And you got to be a little bit more careful with the pressure. You get a lot more off, it cleans the pipe a lot better, but it does, what I call is burping the toilets. Basically just puts that up and it takes whatever water is in the toilet and just burps it out. So that cleans out all your traps. So then you get that, it's it's not dirty water, right? It's in the toilet. It's, and then you get that little smell of, of sewer, but then once they, they flush it back again, it fills that trap back up. And sometimes there has been occasions where it's been a venting problem on a house. Houses are properly vented. So that has nowhere to go besides up to that fixture. But yes, no, we don't, we definitely know. We told, we're not going to use the skid on the eight-inch pipes. You know, it does give us a better picture because it does get it up out of the water, you know, it's basically just brings it up. I don't know how many inches, a couple inches, but it does make that unit heavier. It's a heavier head. So you've got to be able to push that thing up. And they can't go as far, you know, you can't, what we could do is set the truck up and usually jump through a couple manholes.
Okay.
You know, the distance wise, instead of just go a little bit and then go set the next one, just a lot more efficient. But with this being the way it is, we're probably going to have to jump from manhole to manhole. It's going to take a little more time. But it'd be a lot less headaches for the residents out there. Yeah, we, we definitely don't want to do that.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, how often does it, does it burp, as you say, into people's homes? Because I'm, I'm, I'm told that this is not the first time it's happened on Grove, just on Grove Street.
That could, that could be, I have to look back. That is probably an annual flush.
Okay.
I'm going to assume. We do the whole city, it's like four or five, four years, five years, we do the whole city.
Okay.
So we've got sections, but then we also have the ones that are annuals that we know we have some either grease problems or whatever problems.
Okay.
And we'll clean those annually to make sure everything's flowing properly. I'm assuming that's going to be the annual one. And just if you had a hard time getting up it, you got to bump the pressure up to get that thing cleaned. So I haven't looked at the video yet. And had a chance.
Okay.
But we did get the video downloaded. So I'll be curious to see what is in there. If there's roots or if there's a sag in the pipe or
Okay.
Something making it harder to get up it.
Okay, great. Keep it, keep, keep it posted. I'm curious too.
Sure. I can send you the dirty movie if you want.
Yeah, I, I'm interested just from a high level, how those things work anyway. So, yeah, sure.
I don't know if that may be too big to email, but I can get to Regina and she can get it to you.
Sounds good. Sounds good. Yeah. What's that?
Hopefully on Calm Eating TV.
There you go. Yeah.
Kind of boring.
I could do Junction City News on it.
Don't tee me up for that. Yeah, I, I would just, you said that this was an annual process, right? So I'm
On certain lines.
On certain lines.
Certain lines is going to be annual. We know we have problems.
Yeah.
Or we've had issues with their plugs. A lot of times grease.
I know.
Stuff that we can't tell people not to put down. We do tell them not to put it down, but it gets down there.
Yeah, and I'm going to, where's the camera area? Please don't put, put grease down your toilet or sinks because not only does it make bricks, bricks drop harder, but it's bad for the pipes at all costs.
And the flushables, do that for Chelsea.
Oh, God.
Forget the flushables for the
There is no such thing as a flushable wipe.
You are correct.
There.
Yeah.
Shout out to Chelsea.
Like, I could tell you, I went on a tour of the, the water treatment facility and, uh, they, they, they showed me where those ended up. So yes, and then I, then I had to, my, my sisters who are fans of these things, I had to talk them out of it. I don't know if it worked, but at least they're not flushing us.
Appreciate that. Yes, thank you.
I was wondering if you have, like, I'm told that, that it's a challenge to notify the neighbor, the neighbors where this happens because it's not something that's scheduled, but you also said that it was annual. So I'm just wondering if we could do a better job of communicating to constituents, to our residents and constituents before these things happen, you do it as the burping happens?
Yeah, it would be hard to do it for the flushing. Uh, we do it for the hydrant flushing.
Okay.
We'll put in, because we have a two-week time in the spring and a two-week time in the fall.
Okay.
And we do the, do a whole citywide saying, hey, we're going to be flushing hydrants.
Okay.
So that can sometimes discolor the water, turn up some things. That's what we're trying to clean out. Uh, as far as, I don't know how we would do it, like certain neighbors, it's, all depends on the day. You know, there'd be certain times, it's not like, okay, from this, from April 1, you know, the dog, it's, it's not that. It's like, okay, we got time, what's your buzz out there? Get a few of these done and he's got to get on another project.
Sure.
It's, I don't want to say it's a filler thing, but we, we do have to jump them around quite a bit. So it's, we can't say like this week we'll be doing this road.
And you, you don't have like a queue of them. We're going to do like, these are the most important ones. They're going to come up in this order. Yeah, I get it that you can't tell, that you can't say, hey, on, uh, on, um, on sometime between Thursday at 8:00 and Friday, Friday at, uh, at noon, we're going to, we're going to hit your street. Um, but, uh, seem like it seems to be that you ought to have enough, like
How do we get it out to people? That's
Well, let me come back to that, right? Because what I'm told is that you, that, uh, when, when it's like, hey, today is the day that we have Grove Street. Today is the day we have Maple Street, right? Then, um, then, then I, I hear you and I understand you when you say, well, hey, I don't have a mechanism to tell anybody, right? But if, but if, uh, if the city were to provide you a mechanism to send it either to the whole city or subsets of the city, right? That's, that's, would that be an imposition to say, hey, um, hey, Ashley, or hey, whatever staffer is in charge of the communication process? We're going to do these streets today. It came up, we have time. Can you please send out notifications? Would that be an imposition on staff?
Oh, we should be able to do that.
Okay.
But I'm not looking you up.
What's that?
Hopefully you're not looking at like getting raw on a blowhorn. To go out, maybe drives up and down the road, the Super Sucker 7000 saying flushing today.
It's a great idea.
I don't know if you'll hear the blowhorn over the sucker.
I know, right? But yeah, that'd be, again, it's, we're not going to be able to tell each one. That's, that's going to be hard. We, we definitely try, you know, but it's, it's just going to be so hard to do. And then, of course, if there is a plug, we're not notifying anybody. We're going to go out there and just get that plug.
Sure.
Yeah, no. Call the emergency. That's what I, I talked to some of the folks on Grove Street.
I understand.
Right, and I think this is a great conversation, but, um, can we kind of, there's a, can we have, we have other stuff we need to get to. So can we put those on the backboard or have this conversation at a later time?
Fair. Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you, Ricky, for answering those. We all want to talk about the new building. Rick Hamlin's here to talk about the new building. So. Come on up.
You come right here and I'm going to sit right by your side.
Don't go very far.
I'll be your wingman.
Thank you.
I love talking to public works facilities.
Hey, Amber, real quick.
Yeah.
I just want to, I just want to note because of the fact that we're moving from one agenda item to the other, uh, I believe we usually give public to be heard an opportunity in case they have some general public works, you know, department head questions, an opportunity to ask.
Sure, I can do that. Does the public have any questions for Ricky Jones? Online, anybody? There's nobody in the room, so I got to pay attention to you guys on, on line. I'm not seeing any. Actor Camlin.
Thank you.
Okay, so Rick, I can share these slides. Is that helpful?
Yes, that would be good.
Okay.
We could put those up on the screen.
I think I got them to fit as best as possible. That's as good as we're going to get in order to fit the whole thing on each page.
Yeah, can you enlarge that to take up the whole screen? That's what you're going to get.
I think that's the best I'm going to get here.
Okay.
You can try to do it a tiny bit, but it's going to really mess up the whole thing.
All right. I may end up walking up there and pointing then to key things that may not be as visible as we like them to be at that size.
Sure.
All right. So, uh, Public Works Facility, uh, conversation about, um, upgrade replacement of the facility. A little history probably is in order. The last time there was an upgrade of the Public Works Facility in terms of, of actual building, storage, operational space was 1996. Uh, we prepared some plans for the enlargement of the existing barn structure and the Public Works Crew, uh, built the addition themselves back in 96. Since then, the only other major change that's happened to the site was the installation of the salt shed. Um, and that happened in 2005. And let me just walk you around the site here. So before I get started on this, let me just say the process, where we're at in terms of moving from where we are to potentially do improvements at the site. You envision this as be a thousand mile journey?
One second, Rick.
We're having a little, we're struggling a little bit to hear Rick right now.
Thank you. Is that better?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, good. So as I was saying, um, where we are, if you consider this a thousand mile journey, we're in the first couple hundred yards of that thousand mile trip to get from where we are to something new at the facility. And so what I'm going to show you tonight is not a final solution. Uh, it's just a point, uh, points to start a discussion about what could happen here and get some guidance about, from you folks, uh, about what might want to happen. So if you're not familiar with this site, um, this is the salt shed here in the corner. The railroad tracks are here. The property is about three acres, um, located off Jackson Street. There's a shed here. This is storage. This is, uh, known as the water building. Here, it's the blue building that you see when you first come in. And then the main shop structure in this area that from here to here, this third of the building was what got added back in 1996. So
I'm sorry to interrupt, Rick. I, I can hear you fine, but I, I'm wondering, Regina, if, if you don't mind, I, because online we can't see where he's pointing. So for, for us to understand the references, I think it would be helpful if, I don't know if maybe you put your mouse over that area or what, however, but, you know.
Logan is working on it.
Working on it.
Thank you.
How about, how about my screen, Marcus?
Uh, unfortunately, you're too far away, sir.
Logan, are you, you ready there? If I point?
If nothing else, the, the square footage is also a reference point on those buildings. If that helps, maybe reference the building by that.
Sure. All right, let me do that. So the building in the lower left corner, 2861 square feet, 2,861 square feet, that's the salt shed. Um, to the right of that, 2,770 square feet, that's a storage, uh, structure. 5,388 square feet, that's the main barn where all the equipment and, uh, all the public work staff work out of. 2,005 square feet in the upper left-hand corner, um, is the, the water building, the blue building, also, uh, storage. Parking lots, uh, the main parking lot is all paved. Um, the parking lot that you see, the long rectangular at the very top of the screen, is a parking lot that was built and leased to a neighbor. Uh, that lease has run out. is a parking lot that was built and leased to a neighbor. That lease has run out, so that area is now usable. So on the screen, you'll see two outlines. One in green and one in red, two dotted lines. And those represent the footprints of the two solutions that we'll talk about as we get a little farther into the slides. And so, Marcus, you can, can you see the green and the red? Okay?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. All right. So the red represents the solution of removing all the existing buildings on the site except for the salt shed and building one entire new facility. The green represents an infill building that would connect the 2,000 square foot building with the 5,000 square foot building. Those buildings would remain and be renovated and, and reworked for a new purpose with a new building, the green building, the green outline, infilling those. So that just gives you an overview of the site and kind of where this whole conversation will go this evening in terms of, of the structures. We could probably go to the next slide. So this just depicts the existing building elevations. So you've got the, the, on the very top view, that structure on the left is the water building, the blue building. Structure on the right is the existing barn shop area. And so those are the, the key buildings that we'll be tying into in the version one solution. So we can probably go to the next page. So this plan shows a 9,900 square foot infill between the 5,000 square foot building and the 2,000 square foot building. This area here, and I'm just pointing to that outline of the 9,900 square feet. That would physically connect the structures, and so there'd be a complete passage from one structure to the other. In inclement weather, there'd be no need, as there is now, to go outside and then back in to get to the other side of the facilities. That new 9,900 square foot area, and you'll see this on another slide, would be the new essentially shop and, and prime vehicle storage space for Public Works. And we'll go through the slides, then we can come back to some of these. Here are the elevations of what that infill would look like. Again, you've got, at the very top, we'll look at the northeast elevation. To the left is the existing barn, existing main Public Works Facility. To the right is that blue building, the water building existing. And what you see in the middle is that 9,000 square foot infill building that would connect those two. And so this just depicts a potential look for what this is. And again, these are ideas, these are concepts, they aren't final designs, but just a way to solve what is not enough room and not enough facility space for Public Works. So let's take a look at the next slide. So here shows the 21,000, 25-foot square foot new building, and this supposes and proposes to remove everything on the site, every building on the site except for the salt shed, that 3,000 square foot structure in the corner. And, and I should say, in version one and version two, we are showing an expansion to the salt shed, adding one more bay to the salt shed, covering the existing bays other to use for gravel now, and then moving some other bays that are up here for cold patch, topsoil, mulch. Moving all of those to the other side of the facility. So all the granular material is all in bins down at the bottom of the page, near that 3,716 square foot, and then the 3,165 square foot labels. So all of the bin material would be moved to there. And then the site, all the rest of the buildings on the site would go, and there'd be one 21,000 square foot building to replace all of the, all of the uses in that building. So we should look at the next slide. So here are the building elevations. Quite a big building, big footprint that would replace everything else on the site. With the version one, there's about a little over 20,000 square feet of total area. With version two, about 21,000 square feet. And so this building would encompass all of the existing buildings that are on the site plus that additional almost 10,000 of new building. So all of the functions would go into one, one facility, one building on the site. So let's take a look at the next slide. So before we started this whole process, we met with the Public Works folks actually several times. And one of the things we did was to inventory every single piece of rolling stock that Public Works has. And, and so it may be a little hard to see on this screen, but there's a picture on the left. There's a description about what, what it is, and then there are dimensions about what it is, what that, how, how big it is, length, width, and height. So we were able to calculate not only the area it took, but also the volume, how tall it needed to be. And so the next slide shows how all of those pieces of equipment might lay out. So let's look at the bottom of the page. This is existing. It shows how, how vehicles are stored now. And you can see that there are multiple vehicles that are stored outside of the building, namely all of the operational pickup trucks from all the, all the staff live outside. In both solutions, all of the equipment fits inside. So either, either way, with a new infill building or take everything down, build all new, that fits in, in both situations. Just a quick little walk around some of the floor plan. In version one, the building in the upper left, the little bit, which is the, the blue building, the metal building, the small, known as the water building, that becomes office space, locker space, meeting space, break area. All of the components that now exist in the existing building in the existing layout, down here in the right corner, that little space, that now all, all happens in that building. So that would be renovated to provide complete kind of working, living space for the Public Works Crew. The main shop area takes all of the equipment that normally gets moved in and out every day. And then the less used equipment is cold storage in would be the old barn facility. And so that's what version one depicts. Version two, everything new, all under one, one roof. Office space, showers, locker, essentially the very same components that live in version one would live in version two, but it would be all under the same roof and not in a semi-separate structure. So with that, let me go back to my seat here and just talk to you a little bit about the, some of the pros and cons of, of the different versions.
Is it helpful if I stay on this slide, Rick, or you want me to do something different?
I think for now, we can stay, we can stay there. Got me okay? All right. So before we started this process, we attended a conference. It was four or five communities in New Hampshire that had rebuilt their public works facilities. And they had a fairly long conversation and sharing about their experiences, what worked well, what worked not so well, things that they would do again, things they wouldn't do again. And one of the stories that one of the communities told was they looked at their current facilities. They said, look, we really, there's, we don't, we don't want to save anything. We're just gonna level everything out in our public work facility. We're gonna build a new building and start from scratch. And so the plan was that the construction was scheduled to take about eight months before they could get back into a facility. There were site problems, there were soil issues, geotechnical issues. It took a little, over two years for them to build their building. And in that time, their Public Works Crew had no place to live. They had vehicles spread all over their community. They had no place for their crews to like meet. They had no facilities. And so that was, to me, a pretty well-learned lesson about just tearing everything down and starting over. And so version one would allow all the operations to continue as the new building got built and the water building got renovated, then the crew could move into those new facilities and really not miss too much of a beat during that process. There'd be some issues, but at least they'd have a roof over their head. The plow trucks could stay undercover in the winter through the construction for the new facility. So that's the benefit of, of version one. Obviously, version two means everything is brand new, everything is complete, there's no old facilities to deal with. So in version one, the one old building gets totally renovated. And we've included in our estimates renovation work for the old, for the barn building too, to, to make some improvements, lighting improvements, seal things up, just make it a better space for what ultimately would be cold storage for some of the equipment. Terms of prices, we've done preliminary costing for the buildings and all the site work. Looks like about $5 million for version one and around $9 million for version two, which is tear everything down and start over again. So that, that's kind of where we're, we're seeing the price breaks. Obviously, with version one, you get to keep some of the structures, so that, that is some savings. You're not building as big of a building total, which is obviously a, a big hunk of the savings. So that's where we're at. Two kind of paths. A chance to choose a right or a left path in terms of, do we infill a building? Or does everything get torn down and a whole new building get built? And again, these aren't meant to be a final answer or solution, but just to offer up that there is a possibility to infill or there is a possibility to tear everything down and, and build new. And whether the building shapes are exactly like that or a little bit different, the costs that we're looking at in terms of big picture are gonna be about the same. So again, we're, we're looking at metal buildings, open span, free span, metal buildings, fairly straightforward, so nothing, nothing too extreme in terms of architecture.
Not too fancy, like a, like an old.
No elevator.
Be a lot easier.
Yeah.
Be the way to do it. Yeah.
So, yeah, pre-engineered metal building would be, would be the main portions of these structures. And with that, let me, let me just stop and see if you have any questions.
So, Rick, you mentioned that in version one, the guys would still have a home during construction.
Correct.
You didn't say that was the case in version two.
Version two, there is no place for them. There's everything, all of their, all of their storage, all of their equipment inside their break room, bathroom. Everything that they've got would be gone to build version two. Everything literally on the site would have to be leveled to build that version two. And in terms of site circulation, so version one would allow through traffic to come through the old barn. So there'd still be a garage door at both ends. And, and equipment could be moved in and out straight through. With version one new building, again, the doors would be at the bottom of the page, top of the page. All the vehicles could drive straight through the, the facility. Plenty of turning radius even for the Super Sucker to come out. There'd be plenty of space for employee parking near the locker room, office end of the building. So that, that works very well on the site. Plus, the office now is right near the front gate entrance area. So right now, if you go to visit Rick Jones, Public Works Superintendent at his office, you have to drive into the facility, past the blue building, past the salt shed, past the barn, past, past the bins and right into the depth of the, of the site to visit him.
Might not even be there.
At the end, yeah. And, and, and you can't tell if he's there, so you might have to turn around and go back. With the, with, with version one, that, all of that, you know, visitors are gonna enter the site and be right there at the office. No need for them to drive and circulate through the, through the operational area of Public Works. And so that separates kind of the working part of the facility with the public, you know, public interface with the facility. Version two does that somewhat also, probably not quite as well as version one, but still, we placed all the office space at, at the first location where you would, would interface or come to the building as you came through the, through the, the entry gate. With version two, because of its size and because of the limited oval room on the site, traffic would enter from, as we're looking at the plan, from the bottom of the drawing and would exit to the left-hand side of the upper part of the drawing. So you would be driving through and having to turn 90 degrees and come out the doors, which can be done, and there's plenty of floor space there, but it's not quite as preferable as if you were able to drive straight through that facility. And if, if, at some point, we'll go back and I'll show you on the site plan, it just, that building, because of its size, pushes right up against the kind of outer limit of that long rectangular parking lot we saw in the original slides. So plenty of storage space, all the same functions. But one of the issues with it obviously is that you gotta find a place for all the equipment and all the people to go during construction.
Guess, guestimates on version one, version two timeframes? I'm not gonna hold you to it.
Yeah, I think, I think I'm gonna say that they're gonna end up about the same. Demolition of the existing building is gonna take a little time because there's some probably hazardous materials, so they're gonna have to be taken care of. The other building will have to be gutted and then, and rebuilt essentially from the inside. I, I think, I think about the same. I guess if I had to say, how fast could Public Works get into the facility and start to use it? Version one's gonna be a little bit quicker because you've got two separate buildings. You've got the big kind of core building in the middle, the new building, that you could get vehicles in before all the paint and baseboard and all was finished in the office space, for example. Because there's still gonna be office space and bathrooms and a meeting place for all the crew still in the old building. And so you could stage your, your move-in in version one. Version two, you're gonna probably want to wait till everything is completely done and all the trim and paint is dry before you start moving anything in there.
Amber, just so you know, Marcus has his hand up as well.
Yeah. Well, that I heard, right? Did I hear that?
Eight months.
Eight months? Okay, sorry.
Oh, in terms of, in terms of how long?
Yeah, yeah. Eight months, okay.
Oh, I, I.
I apparently glossed over it. Okay.
Well, no, I'm, I'm, I would say, I would say realistically, from the time you break down, break ground to the time you get into the building, it's probably a year. It's probably a year's worth of, you know, from, from the time you start to the time you're done. I would plan for a year.
Yeah, go to Marcus before I get started.
Yeah.
You're muted on me.
Go ahead, Tim. You go first. Go ahead.
And I know you guys, well, you said that you, you traveled to New Hampshire and had some conversations. And we have the benefit of having some neighboring municipalities that have done public works facilities in the very recent history. St. Albans started the way, and then Georgia used the St. Albans plans and shrunk it a little bit. And then Milton used the same St. Albans and Georgia plans and twisted the building. And they're all done design-build. And so I'm curious, because the Milton facility that was completed last year is 27,000 square feet. And it cost the town six million bucks. And they raised some of that funds privately. The Georgia facility was bonded in '23, and it was three and a half million dollars on the bond. And so I'm, I'm gonna just lead the charge here and say, I have seen those buildings. I've been in those buildings. I know what those buildings are. And if you're asking me which way to go, we need to tear them down. I'm thankful that none of it encompasses where the old fuel pumps used to be, because that alleviates some issues over on that side. But I'm, it's short of this conversation of hiring architects and doing this and that. I really think that, having learned some lessons from Two Lincoln, design-build would be a better way to go for us. And as we toured through Two Lincoln, everybody said, boy, I wish we could have fixed those floors. Right? And I think this is the perfect opportunity to really have a slate that is clean. And also thinking to the Two Lincoln renovations, there was some other communal space that was offered to staff for meeting spaces and bathroom spaces and lunch spaces that worked, that are village buildings, that are limited access public space. and bathroom spaces and lunch spaces that worked, that are village buildings, that are limited access public spaces that, you know, provide some shelter and some warmth and a bathroom and a kitchenette kind of thing. So I'm sure that those spaces, if you ask that department head, would be offered up relatively easily. I'm thinking of the space above the fire station. So those guys could, you know, have some space. Your trucks are diesel, they need to be plugged in in the winter if they're outside, or is it right, you know, they block heaters, but.
Super sucker.
Yeah.
Got to be heated, it's got to be in someplace.
Yeah.
So we're, we're backup or something, we need to eat that.
Yeah.
You can't just winterize it and park it outside.
Yeah, so, you know, I just, I hate to say renovate the space because it's not really worth renovating, in my opinion. I think it, you know, it's past its, its life expectancy, it's past its point, it's, you know, it's well, anyway, I guess that's my two cents. And I'm, I'm just wondering if it makes sense to reach out to the three municipalities that are 45 minutes to an hour from us to say, hey, realistically, what are we looking at here? I don't know if that's been done. You know, Williston did a public works facility, but by looking at that, we don't have that money. So, you know, that's, that's not in the realm, but the other three, you know, Milton is a community of about the same size. Georgia has a lot more land than we have, so their equipment goes further. And, and St. Albans, again, you know, I think it's a good, a good look at what we could possibly need. I mean, in my mind, these are freestanding steel buildings with some garage doors that have, you know, adjustable height for later needs. They're not limited to the confines of having to order a super sucker with a lower suspension. So it fits in the existing building. They need radiant heat floor and they need quick recovery heaters so that when the doors go open, the cold air isn't moving in, the rest of it's a freestanding building and then there's some conference room walls put up and some bathrooms and other, you know, it's not, it shouldn't be, you know, too, too intense.
Marcus?
Thanks. I appreciate, Tim, you bringing that up, but, and so I, and Rick, I don't want to get into the price tag because this is so preliminary and so early on. But I do want, if nothing else, this, I think this will help in, in the judgment because I totally, my gut reaction, having been in those public works facilities and the other close municipalities, my gut reaction is, yeah, why wouldn't we rebuild? But I do want to ask the question around the existing buildings because part of what I've seen and part of what I understand about the existing buildings is we're not just dealing with cosmetic issues potentially with these particular buildings. Not that they're going to fall down on somebody's head, but right now, but I mean, if we're talking about what the future looks like for these buildings, I would anticipate there's got to be some, a decent amount of work on these buildings to keep them up, maintained and, you know, healthy as best we can, or one and or a couple of them might have have to be replaced the next 10 to 20 years. Because I'm thinking if we build new, then we're building for 50 to 100 years. You know, versus we're putting up a building, but we've got two other projects in the near future. So can you speak, and, and, and Regina, I do want to ask you because it kind of goes back to one of the things that I was noting in the memo, was the statement from staff that this is not meeting our current needs or our future needs. And I, I guess to help the community understand, I think it would be great to be able to frame that in a way that they understand what, what's the need besides space for the trucks? Is there more going on here or is it just space for the trucks?
That part real quick, just from my perspective, you guys both probably have something to add there. But you can tell on the bottom layout that those building, those rectangles that are hanging out here unhoused, just not great for the, any of those vehicles, it'd be best if we can keep them housed. Then really in terms of the facilities for the staff, they are completely inappropriate. There's a toilet in a closet that is just really not great. For me to be thinking that that's where my staff has the only opportunity to go to the bathroom, like, it's really not good at all. So that's my take. You guys might have more to add.
So one of the things important to understand with that version one is that the blue building, the existing building is a metal building, it's, the framework is fine, the structure is fine. And the proposal would be to completely gut it and rebuild the inside. So essentially, all the facilities inside that building, the office space, the lockers, the bathrooms, the showers, the meeting space, the break room area would all be new. So it, essentially you're talking about having a new building. All of the working space where they park the trucks, clean the trucks and move trucks in and out with the equipment that moves most of the time would be a brand new building. So what the old building would be left as is essentially cold storage for the equipment that doesn't move that much. And, and you can take a look, you'll see all the, every single piece of equipment in the old building is labeled and you can look on the plans and go back to that key and see which those are. There's, you know, a man lift, some.
Seasonal equipment.
Yes, seasons. Yeah, yeah, seasonal equipment. And so the old building just becomes really cold storage, Rick, Rick Jones' office becomes planned storage. The old break room becomes the new meter room, meter water room. And so the, the old building becomes more storage. And, you know, like, like every good home, you know, you want to have kind of like the clean area that you live and work in, but it's always good to have a closet, you know, where that other stuff goes. And in version one, there is that kind of closet where the other stuff goes, that you don't have to be tripping over all the time. Whereas in version two, all of that equipment lives right under the same roof, which, which is okay. But now you, you may have to move some things around that you don't have to move around in version two. So and there's, and there's also in version one, we leave the storage, the little storage building that's still in the corner, that is even added storage for equipment, signs, cones, barrels and things like that. If you take everything down, all of that equipment now needs to live somewhere underneath that one big, big tent in the, in that roof. So in version one, you know, you walk into that facility, all the public spaces and the actual working shop, it's going to look like a new building. What you aren't going to see is the cold storage of the old barn. So and you, if you decided in 20 years that more space was needed or adjustments can be made, that's when that building gets torn down. And then you could add that space back. And again, your public works folks never skip a beat because they've got a facility that they're working on. And again, you tear everything down. Not only do you have to find a place for, for the employees, but you've got to find a place to park all that equipment because it's going to have to move off the site during construction. So you got to find a home for, for all of that equipment to live for potentially a year and have access to it.
Thanks, I appreciate that. I, I think, you know, when I think about this, I think that's just a necessary evil of the situation to, you know, to whatever plan we finally come up with. So I'm, I want to make sure we're building the right thing that actually, you know, to Regina's point, as she was talking about, you know, the environment that the staff is working in slash living in, in that, in that facility. I totally get her concern and I agree. So there's a portion of me too that goes, wouldn't it be nicer if I don't actually have to walk outside? I, everything is here within, you know, that I can get to and access, maintain and whatever else. Regardless, because I know we can play with shapes and placement. On that particular note, is there a reason, and again, I know this is very preliminary, is there a reason why it's set back so far? If I'm, if I'm looking at version number two, that it's set back so far off the front of that property versus because I, I'm going to guess based on, again, that, that parking lot that's already existing there, that kind of plays into, you know, how you could turn into this space and move through that space to give you more potential traffic flow access.
Actually, let's, let's stay here. So the reason the version two building is where it is is if you look on sheet A1, which is the one that's up now, in the upper right-hand corner, there's a whole series of bays. And those, those are meant to partially replicate the existing sign building, the shed that's in the lower corner of the existing site. In order to access those, the doors on the outside, there has to be an alleyway to get to them and also a place at the end of the building for pipe storage and other things. And so that's why the building is set back and so that there can be some access on that upper end of the building to get into those storage spaces. Again, replicating some other storage that's on site for things that you don't want necessarily in and around your vehicles, tools, rakes, all the other pieces and parts that can be hung up on a wall. That gives you plenty of storage space, but to access it with the trucks, pickup trucks, bigger trucks, it's, it's, that alley has been left.
And, and you think that that particular position, it needs to be close to the facility? Or could you not place that in the southeast corner of the, because you're taking this building out anyway, so you could potentially put it down here in the southeast corner of this lot?
The, the new building?
Right, the lower right of the, you put that storage on the other end of the property essentially. And then lower right.
That's, that's where it is now. And so what you'd be doing is either leaving that or building a new building in that, in that lower right-hand corner.
So why, why not retain, I guess, since we have the building there, unless there's something structurally wrong with the building, why not retain that building then positioned there? Because they'll still have access, they'll have good access there versus tucking it up into the alley, this alley.
Of all the buildings on the site, that's the one that probably needs the most attention.
That's the worst one.
Yeah, that's, that's.
It's still standing, but I'm not sure.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay.
Held up by the garage doors.
Totally understand. Well, for having to rebuild it anyway into this alleyway, you know, again, I might suggest a consideration for putting it back there. It's also out, you know, easily accessible, I, I think, but then again.
Yeah, and let me just say.
When it works every day, so.
One of the, one of the benefits of placing it as we have is there'd be garage doors on the outside of the building, but also garage doors on the inside of the building. And so if it was inclement weather and you needed to grab some sawhorse signs or other material, you could load up inside the building in the dry and then exit the building. So we, we have access from both sides of those storage bins.
Okay, great. I'll, I'll hold off for now.
One of the things I found interesting about the proposals, we're talking about building this for the next 50 years. One of the, one of the advantages of being four square miles now is that we're not going to be building a lot more roads, right? Yeah, or, or the things that, things that you need to, to maintain. So like, do you envision that we're going to need more space because we're going to need more assault trucks or any of that stuff?
Well, there's been, I've been here 30 things.
Yeah.
And we did not have a backup. We didn't have a street sweeper. We didn't have a super sucker 7,000. So these are all the things that, you know, I really didn't see coming, but we did end up gradually going into that. I'd like to have at least enough space to cover everything that we have now and then a little extra just for who knows what's going to come in the next 20 years, you know, this one piece of equipment that these folks are going to need.
Sure, for sure. And, and really, I'm asking this because, A, I don't know, you're a professional, right? But, but also if we're going to go to, we're going to go to the voters for, you know, for a big bond issue, right? You know, like, like and, and we're not about to grow our, our streets and sewer systems, right? Then the, I'd like to understand what, what, what growth we need to have.
Sure, it's going to be some growth, I'm sure. Some of these plots that are going to go up on things.
Okay, and, and I think, sorry, did I let you finish? I'm sorry.
Can I ask that a microphone be moved next to Ricky or Rick, if you can get up closer, Rick, whichever you're more comfortable with?
Check, check, check. Come in, big Marcus.
You're good, you're good.
Yeah, and, and did I understand you correctly that the two, perfect? Yeah, so it, it's only that building in the far back that has structural issues. We don't have, like, we don't have meeting rooms, right? We have, you, you're, you're, you're interested in, in space and I get comfort for staff, right? More than, more than you're worried that, that most of the buildings are about to fall down, so.
Yeah, it's that one storage shed at the very, yeah, at the, under your map there on the bottom right. That's the one that's, yeah, that's not good. And the, the big structure, Rick kept calling it the barn, that one we did, there is asphalt shingles underneath that tin, we did buy tin, I don't know how many years ago, I can't remember what it was, back when we were trying to merge with the town. And we did public works, we ended up laying that tin on top of that asphalt shingle, just that we did have some leaks in that, so kind of a Band-Aid, I would say.
Fair enough, fair enough. And then last one, I appreciate the, the tour of the facility that you gave me soon after I receded, thank you. One of the things we talked about was that on, was the salt sheds? That, that's, that on a big snow year, we might not be able to store, store enough salt, so it would be useful to have a, a fourth, I believe.
An extra bay.
But, but that's not something that's in this proposal.
Yes, it is. Oh, yes. Version one and version two, add an additional bay for the salt and move the two granular bins over and then also relocate the cold patch mold, topsoil bins to this side and then provides roof structures over all of that granular material, which is not roof now. So whether it's version one or version two, both include that improvement to the granular material storage.
Well, very good. If that, if that is included, then withdraw. All for me, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, speaking in. Anybody else have any other questions from the council?
Just a separate from my, right, just so you can see. This shows two more additions to it, that's the salt shed down there, and then that, those, that area down there would be that storage of these materials.
If you look at the, in your plan sheet V1, you'll see the outline of all the new structures down by the salt shed.
It's kind of black on black, so I missed it, so apologies. Thank you. And I said.
Marcus, any other questions?
No, no, not, not at this time. I, I really do appreciate the preliminary view though, and, and I, so I want to thank you both for coming out and, and sharing this so we could start the conversation that we need to have. But you know, I, I just want to make sure that again, I, you know what, I'm just going to keep my mouth shut for right now. I'm going to wait. There's going to be a better time, so, but thank you both for, for this preliminary look. Thanks.
Top call, which, which way you want to go with it. You know, that's for sure. Want to give you these two options and see what you felt.
I'm going to.
Draw our favorite scissors.
Well, I'm going to bring it back to us. Is there any comments from the public? Use your hand if any. Okay. Yeah.
And, and let me just recap.
Sure.
I misspoke. Version one in the ballpark, five million. Version two in the ballpark, eight million. So five, eight, I think I said nine, so it's, it's five and eight. There's the difference between the two versions based on our preliminary estimates, and that includes the site work.
And, and to, and I heard you say that eight months, eight months, but I think that was just for one version. Is that, it wasn't clear to me whether it was eight months and 12, 12 months in for both plants.
I would, I would plan for a year construction either, either way.
And, and then there's no, there's no time savings by going one way or the other?
There may be some. I don't. It's this preliminary part of the, of the, of where we're at right now because there's so many other details that drive that schedule and how that works. I, I don't think there's a, a way to really parse that out at this point. We'd have to be farther down the road with more details about one or two. I don't think there's going to be a lot of difference, you know. One's not two years, one's one year. I don't think there's that, but one might be a little quicker than the other.
So round robin and see what's your thoughts on one or two? So round robin and see what's your thoughts on one or two? Tim, while he's thinking, I can see the thought process.
I'm going to die on hill number two.
Marcus, one or two?
Don't know yet. Can I, I do, I do, I do have a question, though.
What's your question?
So let's talk about the, let's talk about the vehicles for just a second. Again, Ricky, I want to be clear, I want to be clear with the public regarding. How this impacts your vehicles by the way that they're currently being managed. I mean, I would assume that having so many vehicles out in the weather 24, you know, most of the year. And not just with use, but you know, because of the fact we're storing, it's having impact on those vehicles in such a way that maybe it shaves up, shaves off a year or two. In our ability to use these vehicles or the the length of use. Could we extend our use case on vehicles if we're able to store them indoors? We can't have a 50 year plan on your pickup trucks. I'm just kidding.
I don't know about the 50, yeah. I think we get 10, 12 out of them, and they're pretty good, yes. One of the things is like the back will get stored outside. So in the middle of the winter time, we need that, the hydraulic systems. Just takes a lot to warm it up to be able to move it. So if that was stored inside a building, the street sweeper, we have to winterize and pull the batteries, throw that, tuck it out in the corner. We'd have that in the heated facility. So some of these mild winters and we need it for whatever emergency. I'm not saying just for general maintenance, but for bad accident or some big cleanup, big spill. We could easily pull that out and have access to be able to sweep, you know, whether it be March, you know, if it's halfway warm enough. You know, we could definitely use that. But just again, yes, to get everything undercover and get it out of the weather, it's got to save some. I can't tell you we're going to extend the life of these things, you know, 1.3 years. No, I can't tell you that.
But in either version, they're all coming, they're all getting inside.
Yeah, they're getting inside.
If you're looking for that to be the deciding factor, it's not.
No, no, not at all. But I, you know, again, it's one of those, one of those things about this project and why we're doing it. The other thing that I want to ask is around city vehicles in general. Because, as I recall, and tell me if I'm wrong, but especially when we have been, we've seen. Giant weather events come up. I mean, we do our very best to cover what we can. We have a limited amount of space. But if we had a large, a large enough space, I would assume that some of our other city vehicles and or equipment. Could then potentially be sheltered in a situation where we would want to shelter as much as we can during a potential. You know, weather eventers or such.
Yeah, like EGRP, you mean, like one of their.
I'm thinking about like, are are we managing just to the public works need? Or is there a need beyond that? Because I can foresee, you know, needing to store. Vehicles in a for a short time, if you're talking about, you know, major with, you know. Winter storm or something, that kind of thing. I don't know.
Do store a lot of the plow stuff for EGRP. We got their sander over there. We've got their plow over there, I believe. The pusher for their for the whacker and we do store some of that stuff, not so much the vehicle. They want it there. You know, so when they come in, they don't have to come to our shop to get it. That's what they used to do. They used to come over and grab our pickups. Back when there's two of them plowing, they come over, grab our pickup. So then we wouldn't have them, we'd have to have other vehicles to use. But yes, no, if they needed to bring something over, I think in the past, the fire departments. Stored over there, they're doing what the floor, I think, at the fire department. So we, it was during the summer, of course, so we were able to take all our vehicles out. And I guess one of the things to consider is that the building we have now, the barn, the ceiling height is not good for putting anything up, like a dump body. Body on the sweeper, definitely not the factors. Yeah, definitely not those. But that's just another, just another thing to put out there as far as the the room up. I guess call it headroom or the dump body room.
Gotcha. Awesome. Thank you.
Now you've got to make a decision, one or two?
Two.
Okay. Brian?
And I'm sorry, what what exactly are we deciding here?
Which direction? I mean, I guess.
Which direction?
Yeah, which direction to go for the next steps? Are we are we doing the infill? Or are we doing the full rebuilds?
Well, fair enough, because because I want to rip a little bit on what Marcus is saying. Or at least that I feel like he's saying, in that there is a third option here, which is to do neither. And I am at this point, and you know, with respect, not convinced that we need to do either. So part of that is because they're new, but part of that is that that I, you know, want to see more information. So if what we're agreeing to do here is go forward with and potentially do a plan, then sure. That that said, if I between the two, I think it's kind of a deal breaker that they're without a facility for a year. If the point of this exercise is we have to have these vehicles undercover, not having them undercover for a year is. Is um, is seems like a deal breaker, is a deal breaker to for my perspective, so.
Is that a deal breaker for the project? Because what I heard was it's going to be down regardless of which version we're talking about. So it sounds like if you're saying, if you're saying you're that we're unwilling to. That you're potentially unwilling to, you know, to kick, to move them out. While this, any project is moving forward, I would say I'm not sure how we do that.
Then maybe I misunderstood.
One, they can stay there. One, they can stay. Two, they cannot.
When they have a place to meet, they've got a bathroom, they've got all the facilities they've got now. Obviously, some of the things on the site are going to have to move to make room for construction. But they can still stay on the site and operate out of the site in version one. In version two, there's nothing left for them until that building is completed.
Yeah. Park the vehicles on Jackson.
It doesn't charge, it doesn't change the situation of the vehicles, one or two, though. One, one, like, we still need to find a place for the vehicles, not the people.
No, in 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 version one, the barn stays. And so so the plow trucks that are inside now can stay inside. The pickup trucks that are living outside now would still be outside. So the storage capability, it would be just like it is now until construction was completed. Again, you're going to have to move some things around the site, but there still will be inside storage for key vehicles. Super suckers undercover, the trucks, so the plow guys don't show up and have to spend the first two hours clearing snow off the trucks to plow. In version one, that happens. In version two, unless you find a giant warehouse somewhere where the stuff can live undercover. It's all going to be out and it's probably going to be not all on the site. It's going to be spread around the community because there won't be room on the site.
So thoughts now, based on?
Yeah.
I know you're you're good.
Yeah, I get.
I've been in those buildings, I've been in them a hundred times.
So yes, I didn't, I didn't say there's a third option that you don't have to vote. You you could say I'm not, you know, we're we don't, we're not ready to move forward. That is your, that is totally an option for you, but.
I mean, yeah, we're just, if we're depending on preference, I then. Between one, between the the version which which does not destroy the buildings and love that you use for the year construction. That is, that is my preference of those two options.
So your preference is one.
I believe you, there was confusion.
But two, I'm going to go with two. So. Think you got, you got the majority of the of the room thing too. I mean, obviously, that that brings up the the underlying elephant in the room of what to do, but that's not what we're going to address tonight. I think you needed the direction. I think that, you know, I have some thoughts, but we can, we can, we can take those offline. So.
Fair enough.
You guys got what you need from us?
Yeah, and I think, Brian, to your point. This, essentially what we're attempting to do is try and work backwards from a bond vote. If you folks choose a number of points in this process to even put this forward to a bond vote. So right now, really, our aim is to figure out what even is that dollar amount we're talking about. So then we can get you a bunch more information, like, do we have that debt capacity? If we do have that debt capacity, what does this actually look like for future budgets in terms of paying this debt back? And I definitely hear you too on. A better explanation of the of the need beyond us who've just been here for a long time. If you look at the building and you're like. To some extent, it feels a little bit like a no brainer, but that's not. An accurate description for others who need. Need to know whether this is actually a need or not. So I appreciate you asking those questions.
Yeah, I can, I can tell you, I did not knock on the door where anyone said that we needed a new public works facility. So if we're going to go to the public and ask them to take out, to take out money that they have to repay. Then a better explanation for why that is necessary needs to needs to be brought down.
I think that makes sense, but I also say that I bet you that those people that you knocked on the door have never been to that public works.
Soon as soon as we have a public works open house. For the bond.
Yeah, and you know, I think.
That's a good suggestion.
You have to do that.
Absolutely.
In other places where the building is potentially not even as rough as our current public works facility, it is.
I did hear this when I knocked on doors in Milton, right? When I ran over off some of that, but I didn't miss a job.
Yeah, yeah. So it's it's interesting because it can sometimes tend to be a bit of a hidden facility, like no one has ever been able to go and use it, right? So it does take, I think, a little bit of extra effort to explain why we think this is needed. So.
No, I agree. I agree. When I, when I worked on merger and knocked on doors for merger. It was very hard sell to say we're for town voters, like we want to raise your taxes and you fundamentally get nothing in return. And the example I always use is if if we were coming to you and said that we're going to build you a community center that you can use, and yes, it will cost you money. That's something that voters can get their heads around, where this is like, uh, there's this, we have a public works facility is like, is a, is a, is going to be a dovetail, so.
Yeah.
So with that, I know that you do a lot of great work, and I appreciate it, right?
Except for on Grove Street.
Except for Grove Street.
We did not mean to, we apologize.
Yeah, thank you. So but but yeah, it's like, well, and honestly, a lot of that is is a, is a statement on. On you doing a job, right? Because like, it's the kind, it's like a, it's like a toilet seat problem. Leave the toilet seat up, you get in trouble. But if you put it down, you're doing a good job and no one notices. So I think that's, so, anyway.
I think that's it.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
All right, so the next two items are executive session, so I'm gonna just keep moving and do a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right, council member comments and city manager report.
So I just want to mention. The opioid forum that. We are helping put on as well as the town of Essex, the town of Westford, the Essex-Westford School District and View. So this is September 9th at the Essex High School auditorium. It's going to start at 5:00 PM with a community meal barbecue. And then from 6:00 to 8:30, there are resource booths, discussion panels. And I think this is going to be helpful and and useful event. For folks who don't know, the city does get some opioid funding from pharmaceutical companies. Through these various lawsuits through pharmaceutical companies. And so this could be a helpful opportunity to help inform how we use those funds, so.
Thank you. Counselor comments, anybody?
Marcus has his hand up.
Marcus.
I'm sorry she's not here for me to say this while she's here. She can catch this on YouTube later. But I do want to say congratulations to to Lame for getting that blue ribbon for her beautiful flowers at the fair. You know, really representing with that community garden here in the city. And, you know, just kudos to her. And I'll just mention, my wife got third place for her Whoopie Pie.
Congratulations, ladies. All right, who's got the executive session?
I move that the city council make a specific finding that premature disclosure of the contractual matters would place the city at a substantial disadvantage. I move that the city council enter into executive session to discuss a contract pursuant to one VSA 313A1A. To include the city council and city manager.
Second, all in favor? You have another one?
I have it if you want me to. I move the city council make the specific finding that premature disclosure of the contractual matters. Would place the city at a substantial disadvantage. I move that the city council enter into executive session to discuss. A contract pursuant to one VSA 313A1A to include the city council and city manager.
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you, everyone. We are going into executive session. We are not returning.